Can you all, can you hear me? Got it? Okay. Great. You do? Okay. Okay, let me go ahead and call this meeting of the Stevenville City Council, regular business meeting here on Tuesday, June the 4th, to order. And welcome, everybody, tonight, to this warm, early-June day. Summer has definitely arrived. And we're excited about the beginning of the summer. We've got a... An agenda tonight that's gonna cover several areas that are important. And we're starting with one that we do every year that's tied to the budget process. And that's to have some citizens' budget requests. And see if there are any of those that are in the audience. And then Mark's gonna go over some that he may have received for folks that aren't here tonight. Before we get to that, though, I wanted to remind everybody, I got an email from Mr. Darren Turley this week, who's, he's the director, executive director of the Texas Dairy Association. And the month of June is National Dairy Month. And we in Stevenville are especially connected to the dairy industry. Eret County's the second-largest milk-producing county in the state. And in Eret County, we have fifty-nine dairies. And what that means for us in Stevenville is that that equates to somewhere between two thousand and two thousand five hundred jobs that are directly and indirectly tied to our economy. So it's really important for us, I think, to recognize the impact of the dairy industry and the great work that dairy farmers and their families do here locally. So just wanted to say thanks for all that y'all are doing and for making Stevenville a special community because of your presence and also the economic impact that you have for us. Next thing I want to do is see if there are any citizen general discussion items that anybody wants to come forward and address the council with. And just come forward and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Mark Wallace, and I live at fourteen oh two North Dale. And over the past couple of months, I've been going through the city of Stevenville's website, and I really think that the website is in need of an overhaul. And if you'll permit me just to give a few examples here. For instance, the population is still listed from the year two thousand, okay? We all, we know that that's been updated since then. Also, the tax rate is listed from the year two thousand, two thousand and eleven. Now, you can find the current tax rate if you want to, but you really have to dig through a lot of financial minutia in order to find it. And when you do find it, there's two different listings on there. And if it was me, and I was moving to Stevenville, and I saw one rate and then got charged another one, I don't think I'd be too happy about that. So... And with regards to the Open Meetings Act, I'd like, what I would like to see is a calendar, a very user-friendly calendar on the website. And have a listing of all the city meetings, the planning and zoning meetings, as well as the committee meetings, as well. Because right now, the way I see it, is that the city is being very exclusive to the citizens, rather than being inclusive and getting them all involved. I know that the meetings are posted outside of this building on the wall, but not everybody's gonna come drive down here to see what's going on. Since most people get their information from the websites, you know, as well, how hard can it be to, if it's posted outside, if we could have those posted on a calendar on the website as well? The bottom line is that the website of the city of Stevenville is, it's neither user-friendly nor is it viable for attracting people or businesses to Stevenville.
Okay, thank you. Let me, let me just say this in response to that. I think that's something that the council has recognized, and we do feel like that that's an important media, electronic media for us to keep current and to provide information to the citizens of the community. One of the things that we have done, and you haven't seen the results of it yet because it's still a work in progress, but we have, we have stood up an ad hoc committee to help us look at the media and our use of it. And Brady Pendleton is the lead for that, and has Martha Taylor and Malcolm Cross, they're participating with him, with the city staff, to do some work there. And so it has not gone unnoticed by us, but we certainly appreciate your input there as well. Anybody like to make any other comments? Okay. All right, any others? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the citizens' budget requests. If anybody's here tonight that has a budget request that you'd like to bring forward, we'd be more than happy to hear about that. Like I said earlier, we're entering into the budget cycle for the year. And one of the first steps in that is to hear firsthand from any citizens that might have any, anything that they want to bring up. Okay? I'm not seeing anybody from the audience, so I'll look at Mr. Kaiser. I know you've got some input that you've received electronically.
I do, and just for the record, if it's okay with Mr. Wallace, I'd like to kind of make kind of an official budget request, because there is some budget implications there. So I'm gonna go ahead and add it to our citizen budget request, just to let you know if that's okay with you. So I do want to make sure that it is acknowledged. And we will continue to be looking at that, find the financial resources also to be working towards that, those goals. We had another citizen request from a Marcy Tenter. She sent electronically, I believe several of y'all may have received this, a copy of this as well, but it was submitted for consideration. I actually believe this is her second year to submit this request, but it is. As you know, we've, she's been very interested in us implementing and putting in sidewalks as much as possible. And in this particular case, she's referring to, and feels a strong need for a sidewalk to be put in between from Fry Street to Overhill on Dale Street. And so it is duly noted, it will be a part of that, we'll get a cost estimate to just, so it will be a part of the considerations. And then we have not, and unless there's something came in in the last thirty minutes or so, I don't believe, from our finance director, nor city secretary, nor myself, I'm not aware of any other citizen requests at this time.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the next item, we've got the annual report from specialized billing, and Mr. Bruce Glover is here this evening to go over that. So Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor Will and council members for having us here tonight. We sent you some information of the, of this past year as far as the number of calls we've billed and the revenue. We've seen an increase in the number of, total number of calls that we have in our system. One of those main reasons is because we've been on the EPCR system with the EMS, and that has increased the number of calls. It's not so much the number of transports, it's just the total number of calls that we're receiving into our data system now. So you're gonna see, you do see an increase in that of about two hundred calls. But we also do show an increase in the revenue as well. And we do relate that, again, back to the EPCR and the hard work that the EMS crews have been doing, the chief and the training officer, Stephen, as well. The crews are getting better at their documentation, and a lot of that has to do with the EPCR system. And therefore, it relates, again, to increased in revenue. We normally see about a twenty percent increase when we have a service that goes over to the EPCR. I think right now, y'all are about thirteen percent. And so we're gonna be working with the fire department within the next month or so to try to work out a few bugs that are in the system, to see if we can also increase those revenue rates a little bit more. Now, we are into the, the second, we're going into the second year of our five-year contract that was renewed this, this last council, last year council meeting. We did renew the contract, it included the EPCR system. So everything as far as the contract still remains the same, the rates are still the same. As far as I know, we haven't had any major issues with the fire department, working with the chief and Stephen and the crews have been a real, real easy process, and we don't see any problems in the future. And I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions that you, that you might have at this time.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Nix?
In looking at these numbers, and you explained part of it, why there seemed to be a spike there, and I understand that, but the average collected per call fell during that, is that also connected to the software that you're using?
No, sir, it's the way that we calculated, we changed, we had to change the way we calculated revenue per call. And we went back, we looked at this, and we, after we sent this in, and I got with the, with the owner of the company, Karen, and we went back and recalculated, and we got with, with Mark and also with the chief here, just, I think, yesterday. Actually, I think the calls, the revenue's actually gone up some. It's just the way that we had to recalculate, because we have all these number of calls in there that are not billable calls, and so those have to factor into the system, you know? So it actually brings down what you would think would be, would actually be the revenue per call reimbursement. But these are factoring in no-transport calls as well. So when you go back and you look at the transports, actually, our, the revenue per call has increased to five hundred and...
Five hundred and sixteen.
Five hundred and sixteen fifty. So it actually has gone up.
But that, this factors in those non-transport calls, which there is no bill issue for, correct?
Correct.
If we could, we had to go back and calculate the old way, and if we'd calculate the old way, you would, you would have saw like five hundred and sixteen dollars per call.
Okay. Okay. Well, and I, I was curious about those numbers, but...
All those too, per call.
That makes sense, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I hear a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Nix to accept the report on specialized billing and collection systems. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Report accepted. Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
All right. All right, the next item, Planning and Zoning Commission items, one tonight. So, Betty, you wanna come forward and present that for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a public hearing to consider a request to rezon from B to Retail and Commercial Business District to R to One and Two Family Dwelling District for Lot Four, Block Ninety-two, City Edition, which is located at fifteen thirty-seven North Bates Street. This does come forth as a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Zach and Becky Ward are the owners of this property, and this is their residence homestead. They are seeking rezoning to allow them to make an addition to the home. And it is a unanimous recommendation of the eight members of the commission that were present. You have in your packet, the staff report, an area map, you have the list of property owners, and you do have on page thirteen, an ordinance which would affect this zoning change if you concur with the commission's recommendation. I believe Ms. Ward is here, if you have any questions of her.
Okay.
Or I'd be happy to answer any regarding the staff report.
Any questions for Martha?
Just a quick question, I'm curious, I see, how is this zone to B two before, with the house looking the way it does? It's beautiful.
They have, they have done some renovations, and very nice renovations, just on the exterior of the structure, and some within, but the ordinance would not allow them to expand the size of the residence.
Thank you.
Mr. Nix? That covered your question? Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone like to come forward and speak in, in favor of the proposal? Yes, we're, let me back up and just say that we're opening a public hearing to consider the request to rezon B two and Retail and Commercial Business District to R two, One and Two Family Residential, Lot Four, Block Ninety-two. And call and see if anybody at this time wants to come forward and speak in favor of the action. Anyone opposed? Okay, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and consider a motion to adopt ordinance twenty thirteen oh seven. Mr. McDaniel?
I move we approve the rezoning request of fifteen thirty-seven North Bates Street. Second.
Been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Evans to adopt ordinance twenty thirteen oh seven to rezon B two Retail and Commercial Business District to R two One and Two Family Residential. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimous vote, and ordinance twenty thirteen oh seven is adopted as presented. All right, thank you. And now we'll move on to consider the ordinance to adopt the rate schedule for the rate review mechanism for Atmos Energy Corporation. And Mr. Kaiser, you wanna go through that for us?
Yes, and let me, I apologize if it is, and it is a little bit confusing, but let me just make sure that we will not be, and you will not be voting for a rate increase or a rate implementation tonight. What we will be approving is the process by which that rate mechanism will be implemented, and you will, we will have another ordinance prior to October the fifteenth, that we will be asked to actually approve the rate that is negotiated between now and then. What this does is, and let me just kinda give you a little bit of, and I'm sorry, but I've gotta give you a little bit of history here. We are a part of a coalition with other cities whereby we negotiate the rates for our citizens to establish the natural gas rates that are being used at residents and businesses. And as a part of this coalition, and under state law, we have still continued to maintain the original jurisdiction whereby you, we, we work on behalf of the citizens to set those rates and control those rates, and negotiate those rates, and we do that through the coalition. The legislature this year was fighting very diligently to remove that ability for cities to vote on the rates. And we have been successful at retaining that right for us to participate in the process. And so the significance here is that with the legislature now closed, it is, Atmos is beginning to schedule their incremental rate increases, and the coalition will be negotiating on our behalf, and this is basically a recognition of that process and what will be happening here. So with that, let me just tell you that I do anticipate, and I will just tell you what I do know at this time, we, with this approval, the negotiations will begin immediately following, if they, they probably have already begun. We will have a rate recommendation to us prior to October fifteenth. I will tell you that it is their intent to come back by next June first and have another rate proposal, so we will see it again, and then every June first for the next three to four years. So they are negotiating a, an incremental rate increase, rather than maybe just, in my mind, maybe just a one-shot type approach. At least, that's what's being negotiated at this time. I will tell you right now that the current consumption charge is forty-one point seven cents per MCF, which is, I'm sure, I'm not sure what MCF stands for. I apologize. What, what is that?
Million cubic feet.
Million cubic, million cubic feet? Thousand cubic feet. MCF, and then the customer charge currently, right now, per month is seventeen dollars and seventy cents per month for residential customers. I do know, in the notification that I received, that they do not intend to request a customer charge, so there's not gonna be a charge on the seventeen seventy, but they will be seeing a charge and the increase in the, basically, the cost per gas, the consumption charge. That is all I know, and I will be glad to answer any questions. Again, the approval tonight would be just to authorize the coalition and to let everybody know we are part of this coalition, and we will be in good faith negotiating, letting them negotiate on our behalf for these rates. I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Any other questions for us?
Mark, this question is natural gas-related, but doesn't have to do with rates. I know up in the metroplex in some of the bigger cities, they've had problems with older gas lines that have deteriorated that are major safety concerns. Do we have any of those issues in Stevenville?
We do not. Now, you, I've asked that, we, the concerns that, that are identified in the news media that we've all heard about, those were resolved very quickly, two or three or four years ago, when it all really became, came to light. We had very few that actually fell into that, those categories of large concern. What we are seeing, though, is, and we've been very fortunate to have a very good staff here and crew here locally, that has been working with the city, and we, I believe, and we kinda, with all the utilities, have been working very diligently as we're improving some of the systems and upgrading, I guess you could say, in a lot of places, especially in those areas. We're letting them know where we intend to do some utility work, street work in particular. And so they're going out, as you've seen on Dale Street, they've gone out and gone ahead and made some changes there prior to us working on the street. So things have been going well, but I have been assured on numerous occasions that we do not have any of the failures that have been identified by the news media in Stevenville, Texas. And all of them that we did have were immediately addressed and have been resolved here.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mark? Okay. And I entertain a motion.
I would move we approve ordinance two thousand thirteen oh eight.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Mr. Hogan, to approve ordinance twenty thirteen oh eight, adopting the rate review mechanism process for Atmos Energy Corporation. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries a unanimous vote. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the council, council committee appointments. And we do this every year by requirement of the council, the review of the committees, and we've had a change, obviously, with Mr. Cood moving off the council and Casey Hogan coming on to the council. And so we've got before us tonight each of the committees. And the, Mr. Cood was a chair of the Environmental Management Committee, and our procedures tell us that when there is a chairmanship that is vacated, the, the most senior member of the council that's not a chairperson will, will be designated into that position. So Brady Pendleton has been recommended as a chairperson for the Environmental Management Committee. And then any member that does not have a chairmanship is, is allowed to take a seat on the committee for the four choices that they have. And so in this case, Casey Hogan, being the junior member on the council, is afforded a seat on the four committees that he, he requested, which was finance, personnel, public works, and planning and development. And I'll see, is there any discussion among the council? Okay?
Mayor, I move approval of the proposed committee assignments as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. McDaniel, to accept the committee assignments as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous vote, the committee assignments are approved for twenty thirteen. All right, next on the agenda is the election of mayor pro tem. And just open up for any nominations at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Dr. Cross, he's served with distinction in that capacity in the past, and I, I think he would like to continue to do so.
Thank you very much.
I would like to second his motion.
Okay.
Dr. Cross has done well and hadn't messed anything up that I can remember.
All right. It's been moved by Mr. Nix and seconded by Mr. McDaniel to elect Dr. Cross as mayor pro tem. Any discussion? And Dr. Cross, I heard you say you were willing to accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, no opposition. Dr. Cross?
Yes, I just want to thank the mayor and the council for re-electing me mayor pro tem. The position is largely honorary on the few occasions, however, when I have had to act as mayor of Stevenville, I've been very fortunate to have the cooperation, not only of every member of the council, as I muddle my way through parliamentary procedure, but also the cooperation of Cindy Stafford and Mark Kaiser and Randy Thomas as well, for which I'm most thankful.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is, we have a representative, a seat, a voting representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments, and that was a position that Dr. Cood had, and with his departure, we're gonna need to elect a new person to, to fill that slot. And I've asked Dr. Cross if he would be willing to, to fill that position, and so we'd like to recommend that he, he take that slot. And he said that he's okay with that, so I, we just entertain a motion to consider voting him as a representative.
I move that we elect Malcolm Cross as our voting representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Nix to elect Dr. Malcolm Cross as a represent, voting representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll, by unanimous vote, elect Dr. Cross to be our North Central Texas cog rep. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the consent agenda is the next item.
Mayor?
Mr. McGann?
I move we accept the consent agenda in its entirety.
I'll second that.
Okay, where's Dr. Cood when you need him? Joe, if you're watching tonight, we love you, okay? It's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, is that right?
Mr. Nix.
Or was it Nick?
Either one, I'll give it to Mr. Nix if he'd like it, if he's keeping tally.
Okay. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved as presented. Let me turn it over to the city administrator, Mark Kaiser, for comments.
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to announce, and make sure that everybody did receive, we were notified last week or week and a half ago that we have been successfully awarded the grant, the Small Trails Grant, for a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And so, again, I commend all of the staff, and especially, I really want to say a special thanks to Sanford for kind of, I hate to say it, but very quickly putting together the grant application for us in that process. So we're excited. We actually will not be getting that paperwork until August, September timeframe, so don't expect the construction to begin anytime soon. But again, that's just a very positive acknowledgement of some of the projects that we've got going forward, and I'm excited about that. I do want to let you just, give you a little bit of update on the Alexander Road project. You can see here at the bottom, I do want to acknowledge that we are substantially complete with all the utility improvements put into Alexander Road area, and I believe they started this week surveying and will begin grading, and so hopefully we'll begin that construction process. All of the other projects that I've told you about, streetwise, going on this summer, have commenced. My understanding is that they had the pre-construction meeting on Washington Street today, or having it tomorrow, and, and we should start seeing that project moving pretty quickly. But again, just encourage everybody to be patient and be safe, especially around those construction zones. The last thing I really want to emphasize, point out, and maybe explain a little bit, we will, it is not intended to have a meeting next Tuesday night because of the town hall meeting that will be on Monday night. So we do have the...
So, we do have the town hall meeting Monday night. You should have all received that invitation. The community is invited to attend. It will be at the Senior Citizens Center facility. We will begin at five thirty. And just tentatively, I think, would be around seven, seven-thirty. We should be complete. We'll try to have water and coffee available for those. But I think it will be very informative and hopefully, something very exciting that the community will be interested in as we move forward. The two topics in particular are in regards to tax increment financing, and in particular, a method to try to maybe evaluate for some investment into the downtown area, downtown district. And then, the other item is a presentation from the retail coach. And the retail coach is to provide some guidance and strategic assistance in identifying those dollars, they call it leakage, that are leaving Steenville when people go shop elsewhere. If there's a way we can capture those businesses and try to bring them to Steenville, Texas. That's the primary focus. There's a lot of other pieces to the puzzle. But again, I'm very excited about that. But I wanted you to know, we will not meet Tuesday, to meet Monday. However, on Tuesday night, the Oxford House has been the recipient of a grant. And they have invited us all, if you have Tuesday night available, to be at their reception, check acceptance. Again, it is, I believe, something very exciting and something they've been working on for quite some time. And so, I would like to encourage all, especially all of you council members, to help them to celebrate in their accomplishment in receiving those funds. The rest, we will begin, again, our budget work sessions and deliberations the weeks afterwards. With that, I will be glad to answer any other questions.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What kind of completion date do they have on Alexander Road? Is it in the contract?
Alexander Road, September something, end of September, October. It's going to be, it'll be into the fall, for sure.
Because I've been kind of keeping an eye on it, and it seems like since our last meeting, that...
Well, they were never scheduled to really go in and do too much work on Alexander Road. Those, the utilities were getting complete.
Right.
And so, we were in that transition period. The street company, the company that's doing this street work, really, the real order has been Michael Haney, as soon as school got out, get to work over on Dale Street to make sure we beat these windows before school gets back. And then, obviously, another crew there at Alexander Road. So, Alexander Road is going to be all concrete versus the other two have some asphalt pieces. So, they're putting the curb and gutter at those other locations and pouring the concrete, and then they'll be getting over there. It should be graded then, and they'll be able to get go. Well, obviously, there's the tie-in with the drink, with the street improvements as well. But a lot of the grading has been done to try to at least develop that, begin developing that, you know? The water's going to be going downhill to that location no matter what, so...
Thank you.
Mayor, a question.
Yes.
What about the Northwest Loop construction? When is that expected to be complete? Did I see October?
The Northwest Loop is going to be late into the fall.
Okay.
Late into the fall. So, it's a very, it's a very long project. Washington Street's going to go pretty quick. Dale Street will, Michael Haney will. Alexander Road and the Northwest Loop are going to be the ones that hang around a while because of just of the extent of...
Are they resurfacing the Northwest Loop? Is that what they're...
They are, they're completely reworking the base. And the base, not so much in the middle, but especially out towards each edge. And then, they're going to be asphalting it completely all the way and really stabilizing it. They just had a significant amount of failures in the structure. And again, what it amounts to is, is everything's been kind of towards the middle, might be pretty good, but the sides are where it was, is getting weak, and it was just causing everything to sort of, which is part of the reason why I was arguing and been trying to get curb and gutter there, but we were unsuccessful in getting those findings. But, so, it's going to look a little wider when it's done, but it's really not. They're just going to be stabilizing those shoulders a lot better with better base. And then, in my mind, kind of flatten it out a little bit better.
Okay, any other questions for Mark? All right, let's see if we have any comments from council members. We'll start with Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Evans, how much time do we have left on the clock? I just want to make sure my remarks are concise.
He's down for six fifteen in the poll.
Okay, I'll make sure my remarks are concise and to the point. I know it's not, probably not traditional for a rookie member to say a lot at his or her first meeting, but I think this is important enough that it needs to be brought up and it needs to be said. First off, our hearts and prayers go out to those, our neighbors in the north, to our northeast that were affected by the tornado three weeks ago in Granbury. Of course, the folks, we've all heard about what happened in Moore, Oklahoma. It's just terrible. And of course, in Cleburne. So, just want to say our hearts and prayers go out to those folks as they're trying to rebuild their lives and, of course, loss of life in Granbury and in Moore. And I think at times like these, we've really got to ask ourselves as city leaders, is our city prepared for an emergency? And God forbid we ever have a tornado. I was talking to Chief Chu yesterday, and he tells me, and I'll put him on the spot, by his decimation, it's been nineteen forty-nine since Steenville was hit by a tornado. And we'll continue to pray that that never happens. But as city leaders, we have to prepare that it could, like, it could happen tomorrow. And I got an email on May seventeenth from a citizen. And I'm not going to read the entire email, but they asked me to take a look at a USA Today article entitled, "In the Jaws of a Tornado." And I won't read the whole article, but part of the article says, "After surveying the destroyed neighborhoods Thursday morning in Granbury, Hood County Sheriff Roger Deeds said he was surprised there weren't more deaths. As the storm approached Wednesday night, Deeds drove through the town, huddled over a handheld radio with the National Weather Service and local storm spotters," he said. "As they noticed the dark twisting clouds dipping towards the ground, Deeds triggered the city's code-red emergency phone service that dialed eighteen thousand citizens and alerted them of the impending twister, a move that might have saved dozens of lives." So, that's in Granbury, and that's the article a citizen sent me. Another article I found on the Star Telegram was about the Cleburne tornado. And that was an E, the Granbury tornado was an F-four, and the Cleburne tornado was an F-three. Hundred-and-forty mile-per-hour winds, there were no deaths in Granbury. Praise God for that. And it says here in the article that the Cleburne tornado damaged six hundred homes. Seventy-two ended up with extreme damage or total loss, Mayor Scott Kane said. That no one died in Cleburne can be attributed to plenty of warning from news reports and from the city's code-red early warning system, McCain said. It also helped that the tornado dissipated before reaching more densely populated areas. So after I read that, I've started to ask the question, is our city prepared? And the citizen in the email asked me if we had a system similar to code-red or an internet-based emergency alert system. And so, I started to talk to Mark, and I talked to our fire chief. And I've been told no. I've been told that it's been a budget request, at least over the last four years. It's about a fifteen-thousand-dollar price tag, give or take, out of a twenty-six-million-dollar budget. And I think it's important because folks in today's world, a lot of folks don't have hard-line phone service anymore at their house. A lot of folks don't have cable television, they can be interrupted. A lot of folks have DirecTV, and folks like me just have my iPhone. And if the power goes out, and there's really no way to communicate with those citizens, that's when you really need an internet-based emergency notification system like this. I think it's time that our city looks into this. I know I'm new to the council, and I don't know the entire background of this. But when you're talking about fifteen thousand dollars out of a twenty-six-million-dollar budget that could save, in Granbury, they estimated it saved dozens of lives. If it saved one life here in Steenville over the next ten years, it'd be worth our investment, no matter what that investment is. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll just ask that when the finance committee meets, I believe on April, April, Casey, it's June, June eighteenth, we take a look at this. I don't even think it's something that can wait until the next budget cycle. I think we need to look at it as an emergency budget item. I think it's that important to our city. So with that, are you on my time?
Okay. Since you brought it up, let me just make one quick comment about emergency preparedness and disaster preparedness that I think is important. We are very aware and cognizant as a city government of that. I know that the fire and police chief go to great lengths working and coordinating with the county on items. And recently, what was it, Mark? About six weeks ago, we sat down and had a meeting, the city and the county, Judge Thompson, myself, and the emergency management coordinator for the county and the city, just to go over roles and responsibilities and talk about those very issues of the decision processes and the emergency operations center standing up to ensure that there's adequate leadership in place for those events when they occur. But I think your point about the emergency notification system is really important and would ask as we enter into those discussions that we not forget about interface with Tarleton and Code Purple and how all that interfaces. And so, that's excellent.
And one more comment, Mr. Mayor. I talked a lot about severe weather and tornadoes, but obviously, there's a lot more use for that system.
Right.
Looking here, you know, water boil notices, lost persons, chemical emergencies, traffic, you know, if you had a major fire in town.
Right.
I probably emphasize a lot on tornadoes and severe weather because that's what's happening right now. But it's a tool that our city could, as you know, could use year-round.
Right, great. And I also know it's a pretty effective tool to use media to tell people about daily lunch specials in town. And it's my daughter picked up her chicken today, right? We all said chicken today because of that notice. Y'all know about that?
I didn't get on the notice, we didn't know anything about it.
There's an email, a text notification system in town that's coordinated by the chamber, I believe, that sends out a lunch special of the day. And it's, wherever it happens, there's a line that day. And it's a great interactive effort on the part of our chamber.
Mr. Mayor, if you could add us to that, all the council members that list, we appreciate it.
Okay, well...
You just bring the special to you.
Just bring the special to you, okay. Dr. Cross?
No.
All right, Mr. McGann?
Today, I had the rare occasion of seeing one of our city dump trucks being pushed down the street. And it doesn't reach the level of emergency, as Casey has mentioned, the alert system. But there was asphalt in the back of the truck. And one of our street workers was at the steering wheel, and another one was pushing the dump truck about two blocks. And it was hot. It was hot out there. The truck wouldn't run. They just lacked two blocks getting it pushed where they could offload it. And later, I came back by, and they had reached their destination, and the tow truck had gotten there. And so, I expect we'll be hearing from Drew about the need in our budget for at least a new dump truck. They said they've had electrical problems with it. They've had rear end go out. They don't know why it wouldn't start this time. But it felt like it was a hundred out there today. It was probably just ninety. But I would like to thank Drew's tree crew for their dedication and hard work. I would have gotten out and helped, but my boss probably wouldn't have liked me doing that. So, I just wanted to mention that. And Drew, let him know that we do appreciate all their efforts and that come budget time, we'll do the best that we can to find them equipment that works. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And let me, I'm not going to have a comment for everything, but I do think that it's important to note that back in January, remind ourselves as a council in January that we identified a fleet replacement program as one of the strategic priorities for our budget process. And this is exactly one of the reasons for doing that. So you don't wait till failure to replace a vehicle. You have a life cycle that you kind of anticipate some of those things, and you're working toward that end. And that doesn't force guys to get out and push trucks because they would have gotten it in due time. So, I just encourage us as we're looking at that to make sure that we've got a plan in place to keep our fleet in a condition where it doesn't require, you know, folks to get out and push like that, so... Mr. Pendleton?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing.
Mr. Nix? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Evans? Okay.
Close to Scott's. Martha, I have six.
I had six twelve.
Oh, man. Okay. Well, I've got a couple of things I wanted to reiterate. The thank you for the staff, you know, Mark, Drew. And they mentioned Shrinkle Rollins and Associates, which is a company that we tap into for engineering support. The grant for the trail is a huge, going to be a huge benefit that ties the existing trail to the city park. And so, thank you all for your great work there. And I think, you know, it's one of those things where the momentum continues to build for the trail. And we are having another meeting with the Bosque River Trail next week. In fact, there's been interest by every dean of college at Tarleton to look at ways that they can use the trail. And we're meeting, the National Park Service is coming back next week to meet with them to see how they can tap in and participate in that. And I think it's really neat to see how this is becoming more than just a place to go out and walk. There's educational opportunities there that people are looking at using. And I think it's going to continue to grow to be a focal point for our community. And we should all be really proud of that and help and encourage that development. So that's really exciting to see. And just also, a word of thanks to the Oxford House folks and their yeoman's effort to preserve that piece of heritage and in the museum where it is and its relationship to the trail and its relationship to downtown. They all have a synergistic effect for our community. And we need to pay attention and nurture that every chance we get because those are things that make a difference down the road. The town hall meeting is the last thing that I wanted to highlight. We, in the council, we have looked at these issues of tax increment financing and retail economic development and felt it important to have the town hall as a forum to help provide transparency and inform the public about what's going on. Because the success in any of these programs is going to be a community-based effort. It's not going to be a city staff-led effort or a council-led effort. It has to be a community-based effort. And the more aware we can be as a community about what the opportunities are, what the challenges are, you know, where are we? Where do we need to be? And how do we get there? To be able to discuss and talk through these issues, I think, will be very important. I know there's a lot of anticipation about the evening. And that's encouraging because I see that there's interest in the community to get involved and understand more about how these two areas might affect Steenville in the future. And so, I want to thank the city staff and the chamber for helping to organize the evening. And I think it's going to be a very productive evening. So, with that, unless there's any other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Move to second that we adjourn, and at five seventeen, we'll...
Six seventeen.
Six seventeen, I'm sorry. Six seventeen, we'll adjourn.